We'll go ahead and get started. Good morning, and thank you for joining us this morning at our City Council work session. We'll go ahead and get started. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Genom?
Here.
Dorrit?
Here.
Johnson?
Manon?
Here.
Black?
Here. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number two, which was African Sister Cities Subcommittee Update. Representatives from the African Sister Cities Subcommittee will discuss the Subcommittee's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations. Thank you.
Hi. So I'm Dana Olson, and I'm actually on the African Sister Cities Committee, but I'm also the president of the Sisters, the Sister Cities Foundation of Pocatello. I always want to put Pocatello in front. So I just want to kind of give you kind of an idea of, we really appreciate the support of the city, because the city has been working with Sister Cities for 37 years, and with the Japanese Sister City, and we've actually had our relationship with Queremangil and Burkina Faso for 20 years. So we feel that is pretty neat. The foundation was started in 2000, and it's been mostly a fundraising foundation, and we're currently working with the city of Pocatello to better define what the relationship is between the foundation and the committees, because it's sort of been, I've been the president, and I turn in taxes with Peggy once a year, and send in the stuff to the state of Idaho, and that's about all the foundation's done. It's just been a fundraising avenue for us. So we're working and actually having a meeting tomorrow, so we'll probably have a little bit more information, so I can't tell you anything, because I don't know anything yet. You may know more than I do.
I don't know if we do.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. So, but, and, so I guess that was kind of just my update on kind of the foundation, and we're exploring, trying to define those, that relationship, and better making that work for everybody, so, and that's why I'm here, and that's my job right now.
Well, I have some pictures here. You can see them up there. These are traditional mass for this area of Burkina Faso, and they, they have a big mass festival there every year. This is, those are pots, you know, made with...
Adicorns?
No, they're not made with adicorns. They're pots.
Okay.
And this year, earlier in the spring, well, I guess it was in January.
Yeah.
They had major flooding here, and this is the road to the village, and the river overflowed, and this is kind of a dangerous situation for the people, because the crocodiles that live in the river will come up with this, and then it puts them in danger of being attacked. Here's another view of the river. The river usually only has like, you know, two feet of water in it, and now it's overflowing its banks. This is Terry Noel on the right. He's the person that we contact and is our liaison with the village, and that's his daughter next to him. She's attending the university, and she's studying to become a doctor. She's in her third year of school. These are traditional costumes that are worn by many of the people, well, not many of the people, but they are traditional costumes that they, that are worn, and in years past, they were used as shields when they went to war, but now they're just used in more for, for show, and for dancing, and ceremonies. Those are made of cowryer shells, and cowryer shells originally were used as money. They were exchanged for money.
Yeah.
But now they use them on everything. So if you had this big shield right here, or even this coat, you would really be wealthy. These are two of the teachers in the village, and they are receiving some school supplies that the village got for them. This truck has beds and desks on it, and they went with the, they bought those with the ambulance, so they could replace the beds. This is, you can see that bed's not really good. That's one of the old ones, so. This is our ambulance.
Does she have a side view?
This is when they purchased it at the, I guess, the dealership, and this, it was brand new, and so it was wonderful.
Yeah, it's kind of like a tricycle-type thing, and it's mostly, you know, when we, you know, we think of ambulances, we always think of these things that have all this equipment and stuff, and their biggest concern was actually getting people from the village to definitive care, and so this actually has a place where they can, you know, put somebody in that when roads drive, of course, and get them to, to, to the area. So it serves Queremangil, and then all the villages and stuff around them.
See, there's a helmet right there for the ambulance driver.
So we're pretty, we're pretty excited about that, because that was a request they had for a long time.
Yeah, it was. One of their oldest requests. These people in this line here are the ones that serve on the committee for their, their part, like, like we do. This is their Sister Cities Committee. These guys, I tried, I tried to get the video to download, but I couldn't get it off of my messenger. This was a mask festival, too, as well. These guys are all covered in, in leaves with these fancy elaborate headdresses that are just amazing. These kids are, this is how many kids are in a classroom over there?
Almost 90 per teacher, in every level, and that's standard across the country. It's not just in our village. It's pretty standard everywhere.
But our, our village does have the highest graduation rate of children from grade school, junior high, and high school, so. This is handing out the funds to the kids to go to school, to make sure that they have what they need, so they can go, and they have the grades to go, and, and these two guys are officials.
One of Raymond?
Uh, no, it isn't.
No.
This is one of the teachers' houses. This is just a cloth over the door, so they can open it and let ventilation in, but kind of keep some privacy and the bugs out. Oh, but you did notice the solar panel here.
Yeah, they don't have electricity in the village, right?
And they have so many children come to grade school, that they set up these little shelters and put desks under them, and there's a chalkboard here, so that they could give instruction to more children than what they can put into the classrooms. This is a shot of the road when it's not flooded, going to the village, and this is their main crop millet that they grow there. It's a main staple in their diet. I don't know how many of you have ever eaten millet.
It's not...
It kind of has the consistency, after it's been cooked and mashed up, it's like cream of wheat.
Cream of wheat.
And this is a goat, and it looks like it had twins, which is fantastic, because then they can double their herd really quick here. This man right here, this is Raymond Yarrow, and this is his wife, and she is a...
Well, I know he worked in, in the banking, but I didn't know what...
Yeah, he works for the government in banking, and she is a, she delivers babies, and she travels all over and delivers babies. And they are being honored here. This is their anniversary, and they're being honored for the work that they do to help the country be better.
Yes. Raymond's the treasurer of their group, and handles our money, and he has banking experience, so we're excited about that.
I'm sorry, I had to throw this little guy in here. This is Noel's youngest son, and he was born, he's kind of an oops baby, and so their other children are quite a bit older than him, as you can tell, because they have one in college. And they were, he sent me a message and said that they were considering names, and they were waiting for people to send them suggestions for names for this boy. And so my father had recently died, and I said, "How about naming him after my father?" And they did. So...
This is little Vernon.
But then I couldn't just admit the name, I had to tell him what it meant, too, so. This girl right here was one of the first girls, one of the first kids that we sponsored to go to junior high, and then through high school. She's now a teacher, and she's been teaching for three years. So, and this is her wedding, so...
It looks like they are at a wedding.
Yeah, and that's, that's it. But I do have in your packet, there's a letter from Noel, and it tells the reason why they feel that this relationship is important to them. And then the next page, it's in French and English both. This is the, the women's representative on, on their board, and she also represents some of the women's, they have a couple of women's groups there. And then the last message is the chairman of their Sister Cities group, and they, they feel that this has really improved their lives, as well as the lives of their children, and, and it's, as he said here, "As a representative of the son of the village, I heard that and even saw your numerous deeds to Queremangil through the twinning relationship. Indeed, from the building of classrooms and student sponsors since 2007, to the equipment for the health service and materials, plus ambulance and supports for groups for gardening activities and so on, the interventions are numerous and salutary." So, and Noel says, "On behalf of the village, I say, thank, thank, and thank to all for such great sacrifices. We were so happy that we had planned a great festival this year, 2019, to celebrate the 20th anniversary of our friendship." But they are having a little bit of problems over there. They, they threw the president out of the country, and they have yet to really kind of settle down with their government, which is leading to a lot of upheaval economically, education-wise, and it's allowing some people to cross the Molly, from Molly, especially into our village, and it also, they, they have shut the school down in the village, but they have taken the kids and enrolled them in other schools. So they are still attending schools, which is a great, great deal for them, so. Any questions?
Questions, council? No, it doesn't look like it, but thank you very much for your work, and with this, our African Sister City, it's, it's good work, and it's a lot of it, and it's hard, but we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. We'll move on to agenda item number three, Raftellus Utility Rate Study. Representatives from Raftellus will be present to review the development of a multi-year financial plan, cost of service and utility rates, for the city of Pocatello for fiscal year 2020 through fiscal year 2024.
Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director for the city of Pocatello. I'm joined today with Todd Christiano, if I didn't pre-oralize that too much, with Raftellus, and I'll go ahead and turn the time over to him.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, council. My name is Todd Christiano. I am with Raftellus. For today's discussion, we'll be talking about a comprehensive water, wastewater, and sanitation rate study. Results here today are draft, and today we're looking for your feedback, comments, as we go and finalize this for final approval for council in June of this year. Real quickly, Raftellus is a nationwide firm. We've been in business since 1993. We focus solely on utility financial planning, so a study like this for the city of Pocatello is our bread and butter. This is, this is our, our sweet spot. So we've been doing this for quite some time. Myself, it's a pleasure to be back in the city. I worked on the water rate, water, wastewater, and sanitation studies in 2000, 2005, and 2010. Took a break to work in the utility for a while, and now I'm back working on the study this year. So it was a pleasure to work with staff, and there's a lot of new faces this time around. So our agenda's a little bit lengthy here. You certainly tell me to speed up or slow down, wherever you'd like. We're going to start with talking about the rate-setting process in general, to kind of give you a kind of 50,000-foot overview of what, what do we do for the city over these past few months? Then we'll talk about the water utility, the financials, and the rates associated with the water utility, wastewater utility, and the sanitation utility, show you a quick comparison of rates, water and wastewater rates for other utilities in the region here, and then we're going to talk about water and wastewater, or WPC, capacity fees, and that's the cost to recover backbone infrastructure from, from new connectors to the system. We had set some goals, objectives for this study at the very beginning, and at the end of the day, it's to sustain the utility's financial health. That means meeting all of your policy objectives in terms of meeting your reserve requirements, meeting debt service coverage requirements on any bonds that have been issued specifically, and most recently, in wastewater, and you want rates that equitably recover the cost to provide service. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that means when we get to the cost of service discussion. And we also want capacity fees that recover the cost to serve development, recover those backbone infrastructure-related costs. So those are kind of the overarching goals and objectives, our, our guardrails in which we wanted to stay within when we did this study. So let's talk briefly about the rate-setting process. There's a number of manuals and a lot of precedent, case precedent, court case precedent on setting rates. These are three books that are widely used in the industry. The one on the left is The Principles of Rates and Charges. It's produced by the American Waterworks Association, the premier association for water-related stuff. And the next book is actually a book that Raftellus has been publishing for about 20 years now. It's widely used. And the book on the right is published by the Water and Environment Federation, and it's about rates, charging, and financing. So there's all these principles and guidelines stated in these books, and why this is important is that these are what, if you're following the guiding principles in these manuals, you're helping protect yourself from potential legal challenge. So we follow the basic principles. Now, we don't follow like a cookbook and just take the tables that are in this book and plug in numbers. There's obviously some unique characteristics of every utility that we need to consider, and city of Pocatello's no different. So we took those basic guidelines and principles and applied those to this study to come up with the rates and financial plans we have for you this morning. So the three-step process. We develop a financial plan. We look at your revenues, your expenditures over the course, over the next five years, fiscal year 20 to 24, and we look at your capital improvement program, and then we, we determine, well, how are we going to fund all of these, all these projects and expenses with our revenues? Well, we might issue bonds, we might draw down reserves, or we might need to raise revenue or raise rates in order to do so. That's what the financial plan is telling us. What amount of revenue do we need to meet our annual expenditures? Cost of services now, we get into a little more of the detailed mechanics. This is basically telling us, is each customer class paying a fair share? And for the city, both on the water and wastewater side, you have different customer classes: residential, commercial, industrial, high-strength customers, irrigation, and that sort of thing. So are those customer classes paying their fair share, based on how they place demands on the system? Finally, rate design is, well, how are we going to recover that money? Is it all through a fixed charge? Is it all through a volume-related charge? And there's, obviously, you have precedent already, because you have a current rate structure that you're using, and we evaluated that as well. So those are the three steps that we went through for the rate-setting part of it. The capacity fees are separate, and I'll get back to that at the end of the presentation. So the first step in the financial plan, you can see there's a number of steps here, but basically, we peel back the onion and look at all the financials, accounting information, budget information. We look at the capital budget, we review with the engineering managers, what's the capital improvement program look like, what project can be moved, what's our flexibility, how do we want to fund these things? So we develop a financial plan, and then we try to balance everything. What's the optimal financial plan for the city for each one of the utilities? When I, when I say optimal, I mean, how do we minimize the revenue adjustments while maintaining our reserve targets, while maintaining our debt service coverage over the study period? And so it's this balancing act of trying to find the right, right mix of all of those things, and that's what we've done during this study. And so you can see these arrows that go between capital funding sources and revenue increases. It's how we balance how much you, you issue debt for, what you issue debt for versus what you cash finance, and depending on what level of risk the utilities want to take in terms of issuing debt, and all those sorts of things. Step two, cost of service, and this is a little more detailed here. We look at the cost to provide service to each customer class. Well, each year, the city develops a budget, and this budget has line items like personnel and services, materials, supplies, power, chemicals, and that sort of thing. We translate that budget into a way that we can assign those costs to customer classes based on how they place demands on the system. And what I mean by how they place demands on the system, if you think about an irrigation customer versus a residential customer, in the summertime, a residential customer, an irrigation customer is using quite a bit of water, but you look in the wintertime, their bills are virtually zero. So there's a huge demand in the summertime, no demands in wintertime. Conversely, residential follows a similar pattern, but they still have demands in the wintertime and peaks in the summer, but maybe not as much as irrigation. Those two classes are using water differently, they're placing different demands on the system, different capacity requirements on the system. Those different requirements cost money to provide those services. So that's how we differentiate between the customer classes and how much they bear in providing service to them. So some ways that we measure that is, on the water side, we look at average demands, how much does, does the system use in a year? What are the peak demands the system has? What's the peak day production demand usually in July? What are the number of customers by class? And what are the number of customers by meter size by class? So we look at all these characteristics to determine what's the cost to provide service to each one of these customer classes. Wastewater, similar, we look at the billable flow, as well as strength-related, and strength meaning BOD and TSS, or the organic matter and the suspended solid matter that goes to the treatment plant to be treated. Sanitation, a little, little more simple, car size, frequency, and pickup duration, and those sorts of things. So those are the characteristics we look at, but we have to assign costs in what, in these manners here. We have to assign a cost to an average day or, or a peak day cost. What does that mean? And that enables us to then determine the cost to provide services by customer class. So down here, this last bullet, it says, "Costs will vary by customer class." If all your classes were exactly the same in terms of characteristics, you'd all play the same rate. So that's the cost of service. I just mentioned the steps we go through here. Essentially, we, we go through a detailed process of assigning all your line item O&amp;M to the different facilities. So for example, the water utility might have significant utility costs. Well, a lot of those utility costs might be related to the plant, or they might be related to pumping, so we would assign cost, pump, or electricity cost to those facilities. Then step two, we look at, well, what does a pump do in a system? What is it designed, what does it function? Or what does a storage tank function as in a system? Well, pump, in most basic sense, is designed to meet maximum day demands. A water treatment plant is designed to meet maximum day demands. Storage tanks designed to meet fire flow, or those peak hour events. So we're able to take these costs, we've assigned to each one of these facilities, and then assign these costs based on how they are used or how they're designed in the system. And then we can take those costs and proportion those out to the customer classes based on their different demand characteristics. So it's a, it's a pretty intensive process that we go through. We did it for both water and wastewater and sanitation. Rate design, this is basically, now that we've got our cost to provide service to customer classes, how are we going to recover? Well, we need to know the number of customers by class, we need to know the number of customers by meter size, how much volume is going to be sold for the particular customer class, and this, that, and the other thing, and we come up with the rates. The city of Pocatello's water and sanitation rate, or at least water rates, have two components, a fixed, monthly fixed charge that varies by meter size, and a volume rate. And the volume rate structure might be different by customer class. On the wastewater side, the residential class is just a fixed charge per month. It doesn't matter how much volume they're contributing to the sys, to the treatment plant, they pay 30-some-odd dollars a month. The volume, the commercial class is a little different, they have a fixed charge, and a volume charge in wastewater. So you've got these different rate structures for both water, wastewater, and sanitation as well. With water on the volume rate, it's designed to really recover the cost to provide service of delivering the water resources to collect, treat, and distribute the water, not necessarily the water itself, but the infrastructure required to deliver from point A to point B. Wastewater, similar fashion, that the volume-related cost, recover the cost to deliver the water through the system, deliver the, the flow through the system. And sanitation rates, we're looking at the cost basis on car size, service type, and billing, so. I'll stop right there, because that was the cost service basics in about four minutes, and see if there's any questions before I move on. So let's move on to the study, the nuts and bolts here. We have some general assumptions overall for this study, then we have some more specific assumptions for each one of the utilities. What we've done for each utility, with the exception of sanitation, is we've divvied up the water utility into two sub-funds. An operating fund, which handles the day-to-day operations of maintaining and operating the system, and funding capital repair and replacement. We have a capital sub-fund, which monitors the capital-related activities, such as collecting capacity fee revenue, paying for all the capital improvement projects. The rates are really based off of what's in the operating sub-fund. Now, there's a relationship between two of these sub-funds that we're transferring money from the operating fund to help pay for capital projects, because capacity fees can't fund the entire capital program. And our study periods from fiscal year 20 to 24. Our basis was fiscal year 19, and we projected off that through 2024. So, water utility. Some specific assumptions with water utility, forecast period fiscal year 20 through 24, count growth about 0.5% per year, and that's not changed over the past couple of studies that we've done. And we had to project our consumption, we had to project revenue under the current rate structure, and we looked back at historical billing data. We had 2016, 17, and 18, and really, all those years were about the same in terms of demands. So we felt comfortable and had a conservative estimate of projections of revenue going forward. You obviously don't want to project revenue, or your consumption too high, because you may not meet those targets, so we're always a little conservative, so we looked at a couple of years of data. One of the key items here is target, operating target reserves. There's two reserves here. One is operating, 90 days of operations and maintenance expense, and that's saying that in the operating fund, we want to maintain a minimum balance equal to 90 days of O&amp;M, and that's in case of some emergency situation that comes up, that we can't pull funds from another budgeted item... from another budgeted item, or that we really need to draw money down from the savings account to pay for in the short term. Capital, similar, we have a five-year average of repair and replacement. Now, the city's done a great job of developing a capital improvement program that's consistent per year with consistent repair and replacement projects. And the concept here with this reserve for capital is saying that we want to have an average, average annual reserve in capital based on a five-year average of capital projects. Again, in case there's that emergency project that comes up, or you have to move up project that maybe was not in the budget, that you can't pull from other budget line items, and you can draw down on this reserves only with the hopes of replenishing that reserve in the future. Very common standards that utilities use, these two methods here are very common. Some utilities have more, some utilities have less, but this has worked well for the city over the past couple of studies. Any rates we come up with as a result of the financial plan from fiscal year 20 to 24, we transition those over the five-year period, so from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 24. And what that allows us to do is help smooth out any bumps along the way if we have some revenue adjustments that, you know, are herky-jerky and just a smooth and predictable transition of rate increases over the years. So you're not having one year going up very high, another year not going up as much. It's all about smooth and predictable. And the utility has done this with the utility since back in 2000, maintaining equal annual revenue adjustments, smooth and steady across the study period, four or five years. So here's a summary dashboard of the water utility, and I'll walk through real quickly what these are. That first row, rate revenue increase, 3.5% per year. That's a cumulative impact of 18.8 by fiscal year 24, and that's in row two in the last column. So again, we've kept the revenue adjustments smooth over the study period and at 3.5%. And what that is saying is that that 3.5% revenue adjustment, along with your revenues from rate, through current rate structure, and your other miscellaneous revenues, are going to help fund and meet your annual expenditures over the study period each year. This ending balance shows your ending balance in the operating fund, and you can see we are drawing down the fund balance over the next couple of years, fiscal year 20 to 24. So as an example, in fiscal year 20, the ending balance shows $5.1 million. By the end of fiscal year 24, we're going to have $3.2 million in the bank. So we're also mitigating revenue adjustments by drawing down reserves, taking money out of the savings account over the next couple of years. This target reserves is this 90 days of O and M. We want to make sure that we maintain a balance equal to 90 days of O and M. So you can see here that the target reserves line item, it slowly increases because O and M increases over the next couple of years. And the line below that says undesigned, that's the amount of revenue that you, I'm sorry, the amount of funds you have in excess of your target reserves at the end of each year. You can see that in fiscal year 20, it starts at $2.9 million. You're over your reserve target by 2.9. By fiscal year 25, 24, you're over your target reserve by just $500,000. So we've drawn down reserves, we've maintained our debt service coverage, and we're meeting our expenditures, and we've minimized our revenue adjustments by doing that and funding the entire capital improvement program over the study period. Yes?
Is this based on the current rates?
It's based on, it's based on the current rates plus these 3.5% revenue adjustments.
Okay. Why would we want to draw down that ending balance over the next five years?
That's a very question. Well, one of the reasons is, primary reason is to mitigate additional revenue adjustments. If we did not draw these down, these revenue adjustments per year would be much higher. And that was one of the goals and objectives, was to maintain your target reserves, but also minimize the impact to customers by minimizing the revenue adjustments on an annual basis.
When you get into 2025, though, are you going to be looking at a 10% increase opposed to, is this sustainable?
It's difficult to say. But with every study that has been done by our firm, the two that have not been involved, then when we've come back in the five years, we've always been in a good starting financial position. The city's done a very, the utility's done a very good job of staying close to this. Doesn't mean that you can be certainly below, but it's something to monitor, and the target reserves of $90 million is healthy, is a healthy amount. But for every study that I've been involved in, we follow the same parameter of maintaining reserves at or around the target levels. And that was just to minimize revenue adjustments. If there's a desire to look at a different reserve target and looking at those more flexibility in those revenue adjustments, we can certainly do that. But we had to set some variables, set some parameters there. Okay, so if we look at this from a graphical perspective, this is the operating fund, and we've got three bars, one line. The gray bar here is our revenues. The orange or yellow bar is our expenditures for the year, and the expenditures, again, include operations, maintenance expense, debt service, and rate-related funds used to fund the capital improvement program for whatever the capacity fees cannot fund. The blue bar is your ending fund balance. So you can see in this first year that you've got a great ending fund balance. Your ending balance is far above your target reserves, but your revenues are not meeting your expenditures, and that's the critical item. If our reserves are being drawn down, and we're not meeting our expenditures at the end of the study period, that's the challenge. So let me walk through these steps here. As we go along over this five-year period, you can see that the gray bar is inching up, inching up, inching up, and by fiscal year 24, our revenues are meeting our expenditures to where, if we were to continue on at that pace, we would not be drawing down reserves any longer. So that means that we would, our rates would be sustaining and meeting our annual expenditures without relying on reserves. You wouldn't be adding to reserves, but you also would not be subtracting. So we're trying to end the study period by putting the utility in a good, sound position by having our revenues meet our expenditures. And we've done the same thing for wastewater as well. So that was also a target. Yes?
What causes the uses of funds part to vary so much?
There are, like I mentioned, there are, we make transfers to the capital fund to help fund capital improvements for any improvements that can't be funded by capacity fees. And so the transfers to the capital fund can be a little herky-jerky in a couple of years, and that's the primary reason. We tried to smooth that out as much as possible, but there's just some years where, to make the revenue adjustments work out smooth and predictable, we have some transfers that are a little bit higher or lower than any one given year. And actually, I failed to mention, you might have this packet, do they have this packet? This has all the nitty-gritty detail, and you'll be able to see those transfers in the operating fund to the capital fund. Okay, so we're kind of moving on to the cost of service portion of this, and we have two bars here, and this is what's called a revenue requirement, or the revenue required from rates, meaning this is the amount of rate, this amount of money we need for rates to pay for our expenditures. So what we've done here is we've taken a five-year look of this cash flow here and put into a bar chart of saying, over the five years here, or four years, 2024 through 20, 2020 through 2024, that's five years, what's our total uses or expenditures, and what are our total sources of funds for the operating fund? So on the left here, we have uses of funds. Well, over that study period of fiscal year 20 through 24, our O and M totals $49.3 million. Our debt service is $3 million. Our capital construction transfer is 1.6, and that's for funding future tie-ins, or how you want to say that, the conversion of the district, the subject district.
Oh, okay, yeah, so capital construction funds for like a source water protection program, if we want to do something like that, or?
Yeah.
Sorry, I had to catch up to you there.
In capital, $23.6 million. Now, if you're going back and reviewing this later, and you look at this number here, 23.6, and then look at the capital improvement program in this document, they don't match. They're not going to match, because that $23.6 million represents the rate-related money that needs to be transferred to help fund the remaining portion of the capital improvement program. So that's why that was not matched. So over that study period, we have $77.6 million of expenditures that need to be funded. Well, we need to meet those requirements through revenues. Well, rate revenues are going to make up a majority of this, and this is with the increases included, the 3.5% per year. So 70.8% or $70.8 million of the $77 million is going to be used to fund the expenditures, which is rate revenues. You've got some other miscellaneous income, but you're also drawing down the reserves of $3.8 million, which is this drawdown of this blue bar over the study period. So this just gives you a high-level look of, from a numerical perspective, of what we just saw on that previous chart.
What other income do we have in the water?
There are miscellaneous income, turn-on-turnoffs, rentals. There's a whole list of them in the document here. I don't know off the top of my head exactly all of them, but there's a handful of different charges here. Golf course revenues, connections, water fill station repay, and just miscellaneous revenues. It does add up to 2.9 over the study period. And you have similar miscellaneous revenues in the wastewater utility. Okay, so all that information I gave you about allocating costs and assigning costs based on demand characteristics and how customers use the system and how facilities are designed and function, we've done all that, and this table here is the result. So behind the scenes is all that analysis, and this table is the result of it, of how much do we need to get from each customer class over in fiscal year 24? So let me walk through this real quickly. On the left-hand side, we have all your different customer classes for water. We have residential, multifamily, commercial, industrial, summer line, which is irrigation, and hydrant, private fire line. We have the same thing for outside city. So for fiscal year 24, and this is the last year of the study period, if you jump down to the bottom, that $15.291 million, that's how much we need to recover from rates to fund all those expenditures for the year, for fiscal year 24. Keep in mind, we also have some other revenues that we're able to rely on the miscellaneous revenues and drawing down some of those reserves. But after those things, we still need $15.3 million from rate revenue. And it's divvied out to these customer classes based on our cost of service analysis. When we compare that to the revenue we're currently getting in fiscal year 19, using the fiscal year 19 rates, and consumption, and number of customers, we are currently getting, or projected to get fiscal year 19, $12.6 million. And so the change represents the cumulative amount of additional revenue needed from each customer class over the study period. And I have the numbers right here. Again, we looked at water, the water annual revenue adjustment was 3.5%. That's a cumulative of 18.8%. So this change here reflects 18.8% increase over time. And you can see that some classes are maybe going up more than others here, and that's because the demand characteristics and how customers are using water shifted a little bit, so it's being recognized in these costs. So in a sense, there are some customer classes who rates might go up more than 3.5%. There are some that may not go up as much as 3.5%. And I've got a typical bill example to show you. So here are the service charges, monthly service charges for the water utility. They're based on meter size, and they apply to all customer classes. And so the current three-quarter-inch meter, the smallest meter, is assessed $10.05. And that will increase to $10.62 in fiscal year 20, difference of about 58, 56 cents, 57 cents. And then it increases smoothly across the next few years, the next five years, 13, 26, and fiscal year 24. And as the meter size gets larger, the fee gets larger. So we've changed nothing about that. We've retained the existing structure, we're just changing the values here. Two notes down below, the circuit breaker, which is for the lower income, those are 70% of these service charges. And outside-city rates are 1.5 times inside-city rates. So they pay 1.5 times the inside-city rate, and that's been a policy that's been on the books for quite some time.
Is there, how many circuit breaker users do we have? Anybody know?
Give me an idea, Justin. Excuse me? I couldn't answer that question.
Yeah, it'd probably be a question for utility billing.
It's a small amount, it's a very small amount in comparison to the rest of the classes. Volumetric rates. Single-family, they have a tiered structure, which means as you use more, you pay more. And once you hit 25,000 gallons, your next increment of usage is going to be charged at a higher rate. So right now, it's $2.54 for all consumption, zero 25,000 gallons. Once you hit 26,000 gallons, you're going to pay $3.17 for that 1,000 gallon. You're not going to be charged all of your usage at 3.17, just that incremental amount above 25,000 gallons. And that transitions over the study period. The rest we have our, excuse me, uniform rate, couldn't think of the word, uniform rates across the study period. If you notice here that the over 25,000 gallons rate for residential and the summer line rate have been pegged at the same rate, and that's been a policy for some time as well. And I'll show you why that's important later. We have private fire lines, and based on the different fire line sizes, they get charged a per-month, per-bill basis here. And again, circuit breaker rates are 70% of the residential rates, and outside-city rates are 1.5 times. Okay, so here's a typical bill for residential customer. We looked at a winter usage and a summer usage, average winter usage and average summer usage. 4,000 gallons in the wintertime. It's going up from $20.21 to $21.06, so about 85 cents. It's about a 4% increase, which is higher than the 3.5, so it's a little different with the cost of service changes that we've made. Summer bill goes from $55.77 to $57.60, $1.83 change, again, about 4-ish percent increase. And it just transitions, you can see that it goes, on the winter bill, it goes from 85 cents, 91, 96, 99. So fairly consistent year to year on those. I'm going to stop on the water utility. Any questions?
What's the reason for multifamily being less expensive than single-family?
This comes into the cost of service, in that when you look at the demand patterns, demand characteristics of the multifamily class, it's a little flatter than the single-family class. And that could be for a number of reasons, that the multifamily complex, a large number of units, very little irrigable area, so there's not a lot of outdoor irrigation in the summertime. So when you look at the peaks or the demand profile of the multifamily class versus residential, it might be more like this versus more like this for residential. And that higher curve on the residential, they're going to attribute or accumulate more cost to them. And they're a little bit higher than commercial, which also makes sense, because commercial's got a lot of different types of customers, a lot of diversity, pretty flat demands throughout the year overall.
If we wanted to discourage water use in your rate study, would it be appropriate to increase that over 25,000-gallon rate?
I would suggest that if you wanted to encourage further water conservation in, say, residential, look at adjusting those tiers down and looking at, well, obviously, defining what are the objectives of the rate structure? What do you want to achieve with the rate structures, the conservation and other things? But if you wanted to encourage further water conservation, reducing that first block, something below 25,000, where that pricing signal gets sent faster, in a sense, for people to reduce consumption. But the pricing signal's only one component of conservation. Really, a conservation program is just as critical, having that messaging out there. Yeah, you can be somewhat successful with a tiered structure for maybe a first couple of years until people get used to it, but adjusting those tiers would be a first step. Wastewater utility. Similar assumptions, same forecast period, same growth. Similar assumptions, same forecast period, same growth. We looked at the billing data from fiscal year seventeen, eighteen to determine what's the winter flows that the residential customers are contributing, and looking at the average winter flows contributing to the plant from commercial and industrial. Target reserves, ninety days of O and M, five-year average repair and replacement for capital reserve. And again, we're transitioning those rates. So same assumptions as water. Here's this dashboard, this operating fund dashboard, three percent per year, a cumulative of fifteen point nine percent over the study period. And again, when we look at this ending balance, we're starting out at four point nine, and we're slowly reducing to two point one in fiscal year 24. And when you look at the target reserves, it starts at one point seven and goes to two point oh. But our undesignated or our fund balance above the reserves is only a hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year 24. Gets back to the concern of, well, we're setting ourselves up for problems in fiscal year 25, and I'll show you that in a second. Debt service coverage is very healthy. You have a new bond that was issued, so you have no problems meeting your debt service coverage requirement. And with, similar to the water utility, the wastewater utility, we're drawing down those reserves, but that last year, we've got our revenues meeting our expenditures, and that's really critical. If you don't have your revenues meeting your expenditures, in theory, you'll always be drawing down reserves if you're not doing revenue adjustments. And that can be problematic over time. If you're not setting yourself up with a safety net going into that fiscal year 25. Here's the five-year sources and uses of funds for wastewater utility. Capital is thirteen point four million dollars of the seventy-one point eight million dollars. Again, that's not going to match the total capital number listed in the capital table. It's just the portion of rates that are funding capital. O and M is thirty-seven point one. We do have more debt service now in wastewater than in previous studies, because you just issued some debt a few years ago. And it's capital construction transfer for water quality-related projects. Rate revenues are the significant contributor to meeting those sources of funds. We do have some other income, and we're drawing down reserves, just like we showed in that previous slide. Again, here's the results of the cost of service analysis. What's interesting about this is, if you look at residential and you look at multifamily, or you look at, let's say, residential and commercial, the fiscal year 24 cost of service for residential is five point six million dollars. And it's basically a change of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. You look at commercial, which is three point seven million dollars, it's about two million dollars less, its change is five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So it's seeing a much greater change than the residential class. Again, that's just the cost of service analysis. We're looking at strength, the contribution of organic material, suspended solids, their flows, and their contribution to placing demands on the system. So that's what the cost service is doing for us, is realigning the cost based on how the customers are putting cost or demands on the system. The cumulative increase in revenue adjustments over the study period is two point one million dollars, two point two million dollars. We're going to get an additional two point two million dollars over the study period from these revenue adjustments. Here's the resulting rate structure for wastewater. Single-family or residential, they don't pay a volume charge, it's just rolled into this fixed charge. So what's good about this is that it really contributes to revenue stability. You're going to get the same amount of revenue each month from customers. You don't have to worry about the variability in revenues. Multifamily and commercial, or we call it also non-residential, we've got a service charge of six dollars and twenty-five cents, and then a volume rate of four dollars and sixty cents, and that scales up to five dollars and forty-seven cents for the volume charge in two thousand and twenty-three. We have Chubbitt north of I-86, and they're a wholesale provider. Their service charge is the same as multifamily, commercial, and industrial. Their volume rate's lower. They are charged the inside-city rate, but it's lower because they do not contribute to the cost of the city's collection system. They provide, they send their flows directly to the plant. So within the multifamily and commercial volume charges, the cost of maintaining and servicing the collection system, the smaller collection mains. Chubbitt doesn't use those, doesn't participate in those, so that portion of the, that portion of the rate is taken out for Chubbitt. So by the end of the day, they receive the inside-city related cost, even though they're And they're increasing as well over the study period. Circuit breaker, seventy percent of residential rates. Outside-city rates on wastewater rates is one point two times, different than the inside-city rates. It's been like that for some time. Not sure of the basis for that. I imagine we said some time ago, but it's been followed for quite some time.
I have a question.
Yes.
So we recently had to upgrade our WPC facility so that we had less phosphorus going. Is any of that reflected in Chubbitt's charges? Like, are they helping to, because if they go straight into that plant, are they helping cover any of that, or was that all on us?
Absolutely. They pay, this rate they're paying for is basically a treatment-related cost, which is the new, a lot of phosphorus-related cost, both operating and capital and debt service associated with phosphorus. So yes, we are capturing their proportionate share of phosphorus-related costs based on their flows to the plant.
Okay.
Just like everybody else. Everybody's contributed, they're paying their proportionate share. Industrial, these are some different customers they have. Industrial customers, they typically will also have high-strength charges, so again, six dollars and twenty-five cents, six to thirty-six in fiscal year 20. Their rates are scaling up. But they typically pay these extra-strength charges down below. Sometimes they have to meet a minimum threshold, and they get charged above that. Sometimes they're charged for all strength, so the three dollars and forty-five cents you see for fiscal year 20 on the volume charge, you might have to add some of this dollars per pound to that to get their total volume charge based on whatever their contribution to the system is. And septicage, seventy dollars and seventy-six point sixty, that's going up as well. Here's some typical bills for single-family and commercial. Single-family is going up twenty-eight cents fiscal year 20, and scaling up after that. Commercial, we're going to see a bit of a jump of three dollars and forty-seven cents, about three percent, three-ish, three point five percent. And this is based on an average flow or average winter consumption to the plant of twenty-one thousand gallons. Okay. I want to switch gears. Actually, are there any questions about that? So we've gone over the water cost service, financial plan, rates, and same thing for wastewater. Any other questions on that? Because we're going to move into sanitation, capacity fees.
I've got one question. I've been looking to get the whole picture here.
Yeah.
It looks like we're charging customers a higher level of service charges than we are consumption charges. Because when I look at the meter size, I see that going up by thirty-one percent, thirty-one point nine percent over this five-year study, and I don't see that in the other charges. Are we hitting people too hard at the meter and not, or service charge level, and not hard enough at the consumption level?
Let me ask you, are you referring to water or wastewater?
The water utility. Yeah, I've been trying to, because I didn't see the service charge. I missed it.
On the water utility, the service charge can be found on page, slide twenty. No, slide nineteen, sorry.
But it goes from ten point, for example, the three-quarter inch, goes from ten dollars and five cents to thirteen point two-six. And that's much heavier emphasis on inflation, I guess you would say, than anywhere else I've seen this.
Right. So that's a good observation. What, going off the top of my head, is that there's been more costs assigned to the, we call it, customer component, which is the fixed charge component. And there's utility billing costs. I think there were some new costs in this study that may have not been there in the previous study that's causing that scale up. But you bring a good point that if we're increasing that, we're not increasing the volume charge as much, because we've got to recover the same amount of money, and it's where you're going to get it. And it's a great observation that we may not be putting as much on the volume charge, but those were just the results of the cost service analysis. That wasn't an arbitrary decision, well, we should increase the fixed charge by thirty percent. It was a result of going through all that allocation steps in the process, and this is where we landed, was that change in the service charge.
Doesn't that seem somewhat high based on the percentage of the, what that constitutes is in terms of the other rates we're charging?
I'd have to look at what the other rates are, but I think it really, I mean, I can't...
Just to say, if I'm paying thirty-five dollars for a month for my sewer, and, but I'm, it costs thirteen dollars and something for the service charge on that. If I, that seems like we're billing pretty high, so what would the level be?
Let me just double-check the wastewater service charge real quick, if you don't...
Yeah, I'm just throwing that out as an example.
Yeah, that's something that we can go back and look at with staff and ask some questions on.
Single-family's thirty-two eighty-five. So if I, if I just take all these and divide it by four, so to speak, it seems like we're, it's quite a billing charge to our things. If I'm, when we do the billing, are we assuming that the water carries the whole load? The whole load? Or is it really that we're charging for all three?
Nothing to do with your question right now, so. Don't want to get you off track.
Who's supposed to put that?
Just hand that down, they want to see that.
Okay. Who's your question, counsel?
So my question is, we put water utility, we're charging for a meter, but, and then I heard it was utility billing.
Billing and other related, like meters and services, some general admin.
So how does utility billing get worked in to all three of these that we're providing, getting billed from one place? Utility billing, when we get our bill, we're paying for all three services.
The cost of utility billing?
Mm-hmm.
So it's my understanding that that's kind of split up between the three utilities.
Okay.
And each utility is responsible to help fund the utility billing department.
Okay. I just...
But I believe that's...
Ashley, that... Ashley.
I was going to say, I believe that is built into these rates.
It is, correct.
Okay.
Ashley Walsh, senior accountant. So the utility billing is paid for by the three utilities, and it's based on a percentage. And I believe it's based on, like, expenditures usually. So each, so sanitation, water, and WPC each pay to run utility billing. So that's how it is covered, purely inter-fund charge.
That's not necessarily one-third, one-third, one-third.
No, it is not one-third, one-third. I have the numbers back at my desk, but I'm pretty sure it's based on expense.
We can look into that and get some more detail.
I'm just saying that it looks to me like we're, if somebody's really trying to keep their bill down by not using, we're still going to hit them at thirty-two percent on their, by the size of line they have. And on that specific charge, the service charge, it looks to me like if we really wanted to weight this towards consumption and stuff like that, we would motivate people, yes, stay hooked up to us, but we're not going to charge you for any more than what you're using. So just my option.
We're looking at that. Any other questions about the water and sewer?
Thank you. Looks like we're good.
Okay.
Right now. I might have more questions later, but right now, we're good.
Let's talk about the outside-city differential. This was something we've not really covered in past studies, but we kind of dug into this a little bit. And the city does assess a differential to outside-city customers charging more, and there's a lot of reasons for doing this. And it's rooted in regulatory rate setting, and, but really, a lot of times, this comes down to policy objectives. But at the most basic level, really, it recovers the risk to the owners of the system, the inside-city customers, who also pay taxes within the city and benefit from all the facilities, for providing service to the outside city. And the risk is that, in some instances, that there might be an outside-city customer or group of customers that could tie into a different system, so all of a sudden, you have stranded assets. There's a risk there. May not necessarily be the situation in City of Boca Tello, but that's one of the, one of the common arguments. Another argument is that outside-city customers don't pay property tax, but we all know that the utilities or enterprise funds, they don't receive any property tax money. But you do receive some intangible and direct benefits from city services and emergency services. So say there's a large water main break, and you have to close traffic and redirect traffic, or if there's an accident, you have fire and police there. Well, outside-city customers don't pay for any of that, but they still benefit from the fact that you have to fix that main or provide service to all your customers, especially if it's a loop system. Chubbitt is an outside-city customer, they're assessing the inside-city rate by contract. We did a quick analysis to figure out, well, if Chubbitt paid the one point two times differential, the twenty percent greater rate differential, you'd see a decrease in the overall revenue requirement from inside-city customers of about two point five percent, give or take. And what that's saying is that Chubbitt is a big contributor to the total revenue of the wastewater system. So just adding that one point two multiplier would have a, I would say, noticeable effect. You know, two point five percent is, that's noticeable on a bill. So that was our high-level analysis, and we're just presenting that information for counsel to consider, whereas we've done no action or anything else on it.
Why one point two?
That's the current multiplier, the current differential?
Based on what?
Inner-city code, that's what it's currently called out for. Outside-city customers pay one point two for WPC, for wastewater services, and then one point five for water.
So that could be changed.
It can be changed. And so Jeff and I had this conversation this morning, that there is an analysis you can go through, a couple of analyses you can go through to justify a differential. And it always helps, especially if we go into contract negotiations, because they come and say, well, where'd you get that number from? Going in with a starting number based on an analysis of the kind of mini-valuation of the system and the risk associated with serving outside-city customers is a good place to start. And we were just chatting briefly about that. If you were looking to change that, you can certainly go off a policy and make the decision. But having an analysis to support a one point three-two or a one point five multiplier is always something good to have in your hip pocket when you're making that decision.
So can we get to two point five?
Well, it depends on what the numbers show.
We're all in.
So it's certainly, it's, you know, something that is, if there's a change in the contract or you have additional customers, or you really want to validate, it's a worthwhile exercise, because in my experience, a lot of the litigation from rates comes from wholesale contract customers, not necessarily retail customers, but the wholesale contract customers, or it's about capacity fees or something. And it's about the rate. It's about the rate. And having some sort of justification for it obviously makes severance lives a little bit easier during that discussion.
Can we create that justification?
We can certainly, we can certainly evaluate it from us. We'd be more than happy to evaluate it for the city. We'd be more than happy to do it.
For example, we have one of our staff sitting with you right now that we're paying to be up on this, where Chubbitt doesn't have anybody at this table right now for our rate study. We will have that, our staff person is supported by many other staff people, and I know it probably all goes in collectively to the rate, but we've got attorneys that support us, and how we ferret that out is real important, because I would think we should reclaim every cent we should be able to reclaim for outside services, because otherwise, we're subsidizing.
Right.
This rate study itself is a good example, but...
Yeah. So in this rate study, we've not validated the one point two. We've just examined what would happen if there was a differential on those outside cities. And it just wouldn't be on Chubbitt, it would be on all outside cities. Now, you have very few other outside-city customers. On the water side, you've got a one point five. Someone may raise the question, well, why is it different? And why is, what's the reason for the delta? So it's one of those things, if you would evaluate it for wastewater, you might want to evaluate it for water and see, well, should it be about the same? I realize you have somewhat different customer makeup, but it would be something to consider before going into contract negotiations, and certainly a worthwhile endeavor.
I attended a Chubbitt city... I attended a Chubik City Council meeting a couple of months ago. They talked about doing a rate study, and the staff's idea was, let's just take Pocatello's when it comes out.
So if Council's interested in looking into this a little further as far as these, uh, these rate multipliers, uh, we can, we can get with Todd and his firm and, and have them get us a proposal, and we can bring that back to you guys and see if that's something you'd be interested in.
Let's do it.
I think they need it.
Let's, let's do that.
Okay.
Need something to do, right?
Yeah. I'm out of things to do after this.
And it makes sense where, where, they've got a lot of the knowledge, a lot of the information already on board, and, you know, it would roll in really nicely to go ahead and assume that.
I believe that our firm also helped provide expert testimony on some litigation in the past for the, for the city as well. So we've got some history there. So something else with Chubik North of I-86, pretreatment program cost. So this was something new as well during the study. And I think this is really great. With the previous studies, it's been pretty much the, you know, we'll do the rate study, but here we really peeled back the onion on a lot of things. I mean, uh, we have a lot of new, um, staff that were not part of these studies in the past, so we were able to kind of, not take a full clean sheet of paper, but in the areas we really needed to examine, we're able to peel back the onion. And so the Chubik 1.2 differentials, one of those items. This next one is the pretreatment program cost. We want to do a high-level assessment of, um, there's a, Chubik has come to the city about, hey, will you handle the pretreatment program for us? And hopefully I'm not paraphrasing incorrectly. And if so, what would be the cost to us to do that? And so we did some quick analysis based on some figures we got from staff, and that would be about twenty-two cents per thousand gallons. So whatever Chubik is billed, whatever their rate is now, we would add twenty-two cents to it to do the pretreatment program. And that would handle hiring additional people, the equipment, um, lab time, the sample cost, all of those sorts of things. Be twenty-two cents per thousand gallons. And going off a flow-based would be appropriate, because as you add more people, or add more flow, you're probably adding more people, there's probably more testing required. So that was the thought. And that was our, kind of our first pass at, um, what a rate would be. And obviously, once it comes online, you want to evaluate that to make sure that it's in line with the actual costs.
Any questions on that?
Does, does Chubik have any, um, industry or commercial that has those particular charges to their discharge? You know, that the heavy metal or something? You know what I'm talking about?
Strength charges?
Yeah. Do they have any of those out there?
Levi Adams, the superintendent for WPC. Right now, Chubik does not have any significant industries as far as what we would classify. They do have, you know, restaurants and automotive and other places that do need inspections and do have probably special discharge permits, but nothing as far as significant industries. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so the, let's see, one, two, three. There's five extra strength charges and they don't apply any for-
Uh, no, those extra strength charges, we only bill to, I believe it's seven customers. Those are, that's Great Western Malting, ON, Amies, and a few others. Right now, I don't believe Chubik has anything of that size or substantial. Those, you hit that threshold either by constituents, what you're discharging, or by volume. And I, they don't have any volume charges of that size right now. But that doesn't mean there won't be anything in the future either.
Getting a better handle on this pretreatment program would help us to identify that. Currently, everything that they're discharging right now is, is just considered municipal wastewater, just traditional municipal wastewater.
So does our current contract preclude they're doing that? Or does it, does it have a clause that allows us to evaluate what they're putting in?
The current contract has us, we're supposed to be able to approve what they put in and understand before there's any connections made. Um, this hasn't necessarily been followed through. There's been a lot of, you know, after the thought, oh, by the way, we have a few new businesses coming in. Um, we are working to tighten that down. Right now, we're in the middle of kind of adjusting some of that agreement. Uh, part of that is with this pretreatment as well. The, the pretreatment was really driven more by our recent audit from DEQ on our pretreatment program. They were saying that we needed more oversight as far as what's going in Chubik. Um, so that drives that, uh, the pretreatment issues. Um, and as far as the rest of the agreement, it's, you know, it's, it's all, whether the 1.2 and all that stuff needs to be negotiated between us and Chubik.
Do medical facilities produce any special discharge?
They do. They do need to be regulated and inspected. Um, they're supposed to have some sort of pretreatment on their discharge as well.
So Chubik is opening a new medical facility?
And that, and that is a concern for us. We would like to do inspections on that as well. I know we do pay close attention to the, the hospital here in town.
Any other questions?
See?
Thank you.
We're about two, two-thirds the way through, so. This is a survey from local communities comparing, compared against City of Pocatello's current rates fiscal year nineteen and the proposed 2020 rates. There's a slight bump for Pocatello in the ranking here. And one of the challenges with this is, we don't know if these other utilities are also raising their rates for fiscal year twenty. Um, all these, all these utilities are operated very differently. Some might be operated off wells, I'm not sure. So it's, it's, it's always difficult to make a one-to-one comparison, but at least shows where you are and just on the face of what are the utilities are doing and provides some information there. So we would be going from fifty-six dollars and sixty-four cents to fifty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents, a difference of about a dollar thirty, dollar twenty-eight, something like that. So that's water and sewer at six thousand gallons.
Is water and sewer with sanitation or?
Excludes sanitation.
Okay.
This was part of another survey, and we, they did not have sanitation in, so we wanted to keep that separate. I realize you bill sanitation on the same bill.
So which one is water and which one is sewer?
Sewer is the lighter of the gray, yeah, that doesn't show up too well. So the, the one on the right, the left is water, the darker bar is water, the lighter bar is sewer.
Okay. Oh, I see the key thing.
Okay, sanitation utility. Very similar assumptions. The biggest challenge for the sanitation utility for this study period was the addition of about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of recycling cost. Many, many of you heard about the recycling issue in China, causing all sorts of challenges. We're hearing that across sanitation utilities across the U.S. A lot of them are actually issuing RFPs for studies on how to handle this. So we're doing it now proactively with this, with the city and the utility here. We had to find a way, how do we incorporate this four hundred and twenty thousand dollars and then char, assess it to a, the appropriate customer classes or, or service levels? Also in sanitation utility, I, I call out here, we have two new equipment operators going to be added in twenty-one and twenty-three, and a system analyst to be added, to be added in 2020. Now, I'll pause for a second. There are some new, um, employee, just staff positions being added in wastewater and water as well. I failed to mention that earlier, but there are some, within the financial plans, we've accounted for adding some, uh, two to three new employees in each of those utilities for the beginning in 2021. So, sorry about that. So we're adding two new equipment operators here and a system analyst in 2020. So we have a lot of drivers for revenue adjustments in sanitation utility, and this was a real challenge. But sanitation utility had a very healthy fund balance going into this, so was able to absorb a lot of the increase, especially the recycling cost. We are projecting a 3.3 percent revenue adjustment each year, and that equals to a 15.9 percent. Revenues do not meet expenditures at the end of the study period in sanitation. And it was one of the tenets we had on water and wastewater. And one of the challenges we had was to do that, the rate increase would have to be substantial. So we, we've made a compromise here. So if we look at the ending balance of fiscal year twenty, five point five million dollars, we draw down to four point six million dollars, about a million dollars. We're still, and our target reserves are around two million dollars, jumps to 2.4. Our undesignated are above, our fund balance above our target goes from 3.5 just down to 2.2. So we still have a healthy fund balance at the end of the study period. And that's good, because when you look at this plan here, the last year, our revenues are not meeting our expenditures, but we have set ourselves up going into fiscal year twenty-five that we still have some room to draw down reserves and continue that process of building our revenues meeting our expenditures. But the other challenge here is that we don't know exactly what's going to happen with the recycling costs. It might be 420, it might go up to a million, it might go to zero. And so this is one of the things the utility might have to monitor, because this is a fairly new thing, and there's a lot of uncertainty as to how it's going to impact the utility in the future. So they've got a lot of wiggle room with the reserves right now, should costs increase on that. Um, but we're also minimizing the rate revenue adjustment over the five years, and I'll end up in a good position to start off fiscal year twenty-five. Again, the five-year look ahead here of the revenues expenditures, we're using 1.3 million dollars of reserves and 45.4 million dollars of rate revenue recovered majority of the cost. Capital costs are mainly trucks and that sort of thing associated with pickups. Again, sanitation utility here, um, we see some changes in the different customer classes or service types, the carts. And really, what we've done is allocated that four hundred and twenty million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the cart service type charges only. We've not allocated cost to the billing component. So the billing component stays the same. It's a dollar eighty-four now, it'll go up by three percent next year, but the cart cost will increase more than that, because they are receiving a portion of that, their proportionate share of those recycled costs. And here's the fee schedule, might be a little hard to read. You can see that, um, let's look at the sixty-four gallon cart service charge. It goes from fifteen thirty-eight, jumps to sixteen sixty, a bit over a dollar thirty. Whereas the monthly billing charge, it changes ever so slightly, it's still about 184, goes to 186 in 2021, so very small changes. The ninety-six gallon cart, you see a, a jump as well, about a dollar thirty. That's really what that additional recycling cost is, is costing the cart service types. And there's some more charges there with the roll-off in, um, the Bannock County. The key item here I want to point out is, on the roll-off box service towards the bottom there, the Bannock County landfill charge per ton, that's not changing, and neither is the overweight charge per excess ton, fifty-eight dollars. That was, uh, one, one change we, or one, one item we retained, the, the same as the current rate. Here are the monthly bills. Here's a typical monthly bill. We're gonna see an increase of about a dollar twenty-two on a sixty-four gallon cart. And the next year is, it doesn't go up as much, because we made the jump, we've added the, the dollar thirty, and then it's just basically three percent on top of that. So that's why you see the jump for one year. The same thing goes for the ninety-six gallon cart, dollar thirty-two. And that's about 10 percent, a little less than 10 percent increase. Any questions on sanitation on the survey or water or wastewater, move on to capacity fees? So we're switching gears a little bit. Instead of talking about recovering rates and funds over a one-year period, we'll talk about capacity fees, and that's having the city recouping money for facilities they've built to serve development and to pay for that backbone infrastructure. So that's what capacity fees are designed to do. Backbone facilities include water, you know, major distribution, you know, large transmission mains, water treatment facilities, large pump stations. Backbone facilities for wastewater include, you know, the major interceptor collection lines coming into the plant and obviously treatment facilities. So what we're trying to do is recover a three-quarter inch equivalent cost of capacity. We've kept the methodology the same, it's called the buy-in method. Customers are buying into a system that's been built by existing customers long ago, and now they're paying back those customers for buying into the system. By buying into the system, they don't own anything, they just have the right to water, just giving them the right to water service. And the proposed capacity fees here represent the maximum supportable fee. And by that, it means that, um, if the city were to adopt something greater than what we've proposed, justifying it from a mathematical standpoint might be difficult. So we say maximum supportable. Here's the largest number we can support based on data, documents, and information from the city. So for water, we just have one fee for water, and the change is nominal. Um, there's a number of reasons for that, but we evaluated all of the assets, the replacement cost value of the assets in today's dollars, and looked at what's the demand requirement of a three-quarter inch equivalent meter? What's the production, average production for the system? And calculate three thousand five hundred fifty dollars or about a hundred dollars increase for fiscal year twenty. Now, it does not go up equal annually like the rate increases, because each year we're adding in the additional capital improvement program projects. In some years, capital projects are a larger amount in one year versus smaller amounts, so you'll see a little bit of jump, uh, going on there. Anything greater than three inch, we're gonna assess on an individual basis. We're gonna look at their individual peak demands, peak hour demands, and average load Wastewater, maximum supportable fee, we're going up by sixty dollars for three-quarter inch, and, and three-quarter inch, one inch are most common meter sizes. And capacity fees for water meter sizes greater than two inch are assessed on an individual basis. I do want to point out, when we say meter size here, this is not a wastewater meter, it's based on the water meter, and it's very common, that type of schedule. So this is the treatment-related facilities. Now, we added a lot of phosphorus capital improvements, so we would expect this to be much higher. But the city has issued debt, so in terms of the equity in those new facilities, you don't have that yet, because you've issued a lot of debt for it, so that, the, the debt comes out of the calculation, because it's, it's not been paid off yet. So had it, had you paid fully with cash for the phosphorus facilities, this fee would be much greater. And the principal will come off over time. The collection system here, a slight increase by twenty dollars in fiscal year twenty. Part of that is due to reduced flows for a three-quarter inch equivalent customer, seeing lower flows to the plant for that. So not, not substantial changes. And again, anything over two inches assessed on an individual basis.
Why the differential from year to year again? You're going up twenty and then a hundred and then eighty and then sixty and then eighty and-
Exactly. Um, because as we look at it each year, rather than just scaling by three percent each year, which is a perfectly viable option, a lot of utilities will take the current year and say, we're gonna index this by engineering news record or some sort of construction index. What we've done is looked at each year and said, here's the fee today, we're gonna, next year, we're gonna be adding capital improvements, which is gonna add to our asset or the value of our system, we'll calculate the fee again, and we just go along for each one of these years. And when you look at the capital program and these worksheets here, you'll see that the annual capital costs are not equal over the, over the study period. Some years, they're adding a bunch, and then they're not adding as much, so that's why it, it goes like this over the study period.
One year, we might have a fourth, a four million dollar project, and then next year, we might add a million dollars to it, and so your, your actual value of your system doesn't go up.
Literally.
Literally.
So the information you were given to produce this, are those capital plans in place already then?
They're, they're part of this, yes. They're, they're located in, in the, at the table I, I tried to read that.
It'll put you to sleep.
So the slide, um, final slide is, thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Any more questions, Council?
The question I had was back on sewer, when you had that comparison rate with other communities. I was just curious why Idaho Falls or how they're able to do such a low sewer rate? I know they've got a different deal on water, but sewer, I was wondering about.
Idaho Falls? I, I do not know, and having a low rate is not necessarily a good thing. They might- They might be having some upgrades coming down the pipe. That's the challenge with surveys is you don't know what's behind the numbers. They might be getting subsidized by...
They're right in the middle of an upgrade to their plant right now, so, yeah.
They also have, sorry, Levi, again, they have some significant users being a couple mall plans and then Malalooka as well. And my assumption is that those industries pull a lot of costs and fees away from the residential. They're being charged more, they're getting a big part of the pie.
So they're...
Does that make sense?
Okay.
So instead of having the costs being shared through the residential, the industries being the size that they are, you have a big portion of that cost. Does that make sense?
No, I'm not confident that Malalooka's on, in Idaho Falls still.
Well, whatever the industry is.
Yeah. So the industry is more expensive. This is residential.
We can't figure...
It's interesting that Chubak is that much more. It's a, it's a good graph there. We've got Dana behind you and she may be interested in moving because they're more expensive in Ammon too, so.
But those rates also aren't correct. The Ammon rates aren't correct and the Idaho Falls rates. Because I'm assuming you eliminated the debt service? Because if you put the $40 a month in debt service on Ammons, then you'd have the right rate.
We, we just went off what was in the rate schedule and I don't know whether that was on the rate schedule. But we reviewed that pretty thoroughly, so we can go back and, we'll go back and double check that. You said it was Ammon and which was it all?
Ammon and Idaho Falls. It looks like, I mean, I'd have to check the numbers, but it looks like you just don't have the debt service in for the bonds, that they're both prepaying.
Okay. We can look into that. Is that, is that a separate charge?
It is, but it's in the utility rate. But it's, and it's specific to each enterprise.
We didn't look into that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
In your calculations, you used a half percent per year growth rate. If that changes to 1%, what's the beauty of your numbers?
I can't say for sure, but I, it would, it could impact the revenue adjustment. You maybe have slightly lower revenue adjustments over the study period for both water, well actually all of them, but I don't know what that, what the direct relationship would be between a 0.5% jump is equal to a X percent reduction in rate revenue. But obviously you're generating more revenue and that cumulative impact over time would have an impact on...
So was the potential growth at Northgate calculated in what you did?
No. I don't believe so because we didn't, we didn't have enough information at the time to estimate what that would be. So we wanted to take a conservative approach and say, "Well, when that happens, we can reevaluate." But we didn't want to, and it may have not have changed the 0.5% significantly when we started talking about the pockets of development.
But would we be in a better position if we have a higher growth rate?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Assuming that there's no additional incremental costs associated with that 0.5%. I mean, if you had to hire more meter readers or something, then it could be offset, that could offset some of those, that additional revenue.
Okay. Any other question?
I'll check.
Counsel, thank you. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Could we just take a break for a second? Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a break before we get to our agenda item number four. So we'll, let's hold this break at like five minutes. Thank you for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and continue with agenda item number four, which is our regional economic development of Eastern Idaho Ready update. Dana Kirkham, executive, chief executive officer of Regional Economic Development of Eastern Idaho Ready will be present to give an update of Ready's activities and achievements. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Counsel. Thank you very much for having me. It's actually been a very interesting morning, so I'm glad that I was here. I enjoyed your first presentation. My, the mayor knows this, but my husband works in Mozambique, Africa, so it's kind of interesting to hear other things that are happening. And then, of course, I'm, I'm just always interested in water, sewer, and sanitation. Unfortunately, it's a sickness in me, but I, it's actually a very...
You guys laugh, but she's being serious.
There's nothing that fascinates me more than water. And actually, I commend you on having that study done because too many municipalities don't have a, a good roadmap and, and too many kick the can down the road and don't want to increase the rates. And then somebody pays the price down, anyway. And I actually, I'm sorry that they're going to update their chart because actually it made Ammon look better than Ammon's going to look. So anyway, all right, I don't have a PowerPoint this morning. PowerPoint's a great communication tool, but I'm going a different direction. So in front of you, you have a spreadsheet. We're not going to go through everything on the spreadsheet, but I just think it's a good visual to understand what Ready's been doing. This is a short summary of events and different programs that we've put together, starting from May of last year to May of this year. So you get a full 12-month cycle of some of the things that we have been working on. So the front page really is all things that happened in the first half of that 12-month period. So if you'll flip over to the back, I'm going to spend most of my time on the things that are on the back. I saw many of you at the Colliers event. I appreciate your support and that you were there. I think that that's a great thing that a private industry sector is bringing to our region and a great way for us to bring the whole region together and brand it as one community. We did hand out there these fact sheets and I was going to bring each of you a copy today, but actually since we rolled them out at Colliers, they've been in high demand. And so the first run is long gone. So we've had different companies call and say, "Can we get 100?" or whatever. So, so we're reprinting right now. But this is really the first attempt to try to say, "This is what we are as an entire region, not just each individual county." And I do particularly like the part on the back because it's a good visual for what we get when we leverage all of our assets. So instead of saying you have two museums, you get to say you have 12 museums and 87 hotels and 160-plus trails. And I know it's a large geographic area, but for those of us that live here, we understand that commute is, is normal and we get used to it and we, and so if we can help the outside external market understand that, they'll see that we really do leverage all those assets collectively. So we, we engaged in the Colliers event, provided a lot of data for them, for some of their data sets. You saw an example of that. We tried to give a good overview of the economy in Eastern Idaho. We rolled out the five key industries and Mayor Vlad has had a lot of conversation with me about this. So I want to clarify this to this counsel. I realize that tourism is part of your economy. In fact, if I show you the numbers, it's number four as far as largest employer in Pocatello. But it isn't necessarily translatable across all 14 counties. So when we identify our five, we're, we're looking at the five specific to all 14 counties. Does that make sense? Everybody have clarification on that? That doesn't mean we'll ignore tourism, it just means that when we're looking at the whole, that we're really focused on, on these other five because they drive part of the economy in all 14 counties. All right, we presented the Waste Management Symposium. Now, I know that this is kind of area that maybe Pocatello doesn't spend a lot of time on, but I anticipate you'll be spending more time on. So we have the Energy, Technology, Environment Group, and they will be coming to present to you and talk to you about some of the activity happening at the Idaho National Laboratory, at the Naval Reactors Facility, and in the Idaho Cleanup Project. And whether or not you have a physical presence of those industries, you are impacted by it. You're impacted by it because you have employees that live in your community, but you're also impacted by it from an economic standpoint, for good and for bad. So you have the wonderful opportunity to say that you have a connection to Idaho National Laboratory and to some of the great programs they have going there and the ability to connect industry to the Idaho National Laboratory to test some of their technology. That's a huge selling point. But we can't ignore that we also have nuclear waste sitting in the desert and that brings its own issues. And so it's really important that you have an organization like Ready focused on that, part of waste management, going to the Energy Communities Alliance so that when changes are made, like right now DOE, Department of Energy, is looking to change the high-level waste classification. That could impact the waste that's sitting on the desert now, for good or maybe for bad. We don't know how it's going to play out, but we need someone who's paying attention to that because I think we are all united in feeling like we want the waste to be moved out of Idaho in the most efficient, safest way possible. Any questions about that? Okay. We supported both the ISU Construction Combine and the College of Eastern Idaho Construction Combine, combined. Both of those programs resulted in hires. And so for those of you who aren't aware of what that program is, they build sheds and, for veterans, different construction companies come in and sponsor that event, donate the materials. Home Depot donates the tools, ISU donates some of the tools. They work right alongside potential kids who are looking for jobs and then hopefully hire them by the end of the weekend. And in, in Pocatello, the report I got was 21 kids were hired at the end of that weekend, so that's pretty great. I haven't gotten CEI's numbers yet. So when we talk about housing problems and not having enough labors, this is a tangible thing. It is 21 more people with jobs working toward, you know, filling that deficit, so that's good. I'm going to hop down to the projects just so that, because we're going to talk a little bit about one of them. So we have three projects going right now. I said in the beginning when I took this job that for projects, I wasn't really interested in putting a big, long list on the slide because someone had maybe called Ready and said, "We're interested in coming." My definition of a project is that we've had a site visit or that we've had something very tangible, they've requested an RFI, and there has been follow-up from that RFI. We send out RFIs weekly. That doesn't mean they're really interested. It means we send, you know, we throw our hat in the ring and we hope somebody picked it up, but that doesn't, in my mind, that, that doesn't mean anything. It's if they call me back and they say, "We really are interested and we need more information and we want to engage in some kind of a contract here." So we have three projects going right now. We have Project Gemini, which is a call center, and they are currently, they have come for a site visit. They are currently considering a site in Pocatello, a site in Chubak, and a site in Idaho Falls. And I want to make it clear that we sent that RFI out. We, I mean, every, every community in all 14 counties had a shot at it, but, you know, don't shoot the messenger. At some point, they decide where they want to go and then it's not, it's out of our hands. It goes to the communities and so there's, I wanted to say that we're playing as fair as possible. They're scheduled to come back. They were supposed to come back in May, but it sounds like their timeframe has been pushed back a little bit, so hopefully they're here this summer. Project Kodiak is complicated. Project Kodiak is a company that already exists in our region for different reasons, mostly power costs. They needed to go somewhere else. They were actually looking out of state and out of country. We have had contact with them. I think we have found another site for them in the region. You'll see on this list, we just had dinner with them on Monday night with the governor to talk about some state incentives. I think they will stay in our region. So that's complicated because one community will be losing a very good business and another community will be gaining it. But this is where we really have to put our regional hat on and say, "But the win is that they didn't leave the state of Idaho or the country." All right, and then Project Odyssey is very specific. So Project, Project Odyssey actually did not go out to all communities because by the time their site selector came to us, they already knew where they wanted to go. And it is a molten salt reactor. They haven't said that, but it's like I told them in the executive board meeting yesterday, I'm 97% sure that's what it is, just based on the specifications because they are so unique. It's not like, you know, they fit just any industry. So they are looking at a site in, potentially in Butte County, which is a good thing for Butte County. But this is also, anytime you're in the nuclear space, it's a long game. So just because they're interested today, it could be anywhere five to seven years before you actually see a result of that. So those are the projects that we have going right now. And the other thing I want to talk to you about that we're working on, which I think is really important, is we have brought all of the organizations working in the entrepreneurial space together, from Pocatello to Rexburg. And we've had three meetings now. We have a meeting the end of this month. And we're basically identifying roles and responsibilities and trying to get everyone to work under one umbrella so that we're not duplicating services, that we're leveraging our assets, that we're leveraging some of the grants that are available that come through a regional philosophy. And this is the first time that's happened and I think, I'm very sensitive of that. I feel like, you know, that's one of our biggest mistakes is that we have 10 people trying to do one thing and if we could get all 10 people working on the same page, we would actually, you know, move the needle. So those are just...
Are you referring to 10 business development people?
I'm talking about 10 different organizations. You know, we have different, we, you see it in economic development, you see it in the entrepreneurial space. So for instance, we have the SBDC there, we have SCORE there, we have the Idaho Innovation Center there, we have RBDC there, we have CEE there. You know, all of them are doing, we have INL there, we have KES there. Anyway, I could go on, it's about 20 different organizations. They're all working to help entrepreneurs start a business. But they all just have a little piece of the pie. So if we can pull them all together and say, "You do this and you do this and you do this and we do it all together," you know, then we have, we can send the entrepreneur to one resource. It's far more effective. So those are the main things that are going on right now. I was just here a few months ago. You did hear a lot at the Colliers event and as you know, this will probably be the last time that I present to you. Well, it will be the last time that I present to you. My replacement will be here next. They're, the mayor can give you the update on that, but they're in the process of, of the new hire. So any questions?
Counsel, I might just say you've done an incredible job this last year and...
Thank you.
And thank you for your work with Ready and for your doing what you do.
Thank you.
Pulling it out of where it was and bringing it to where it is now, so thank you.
Well, thank you. And I, you know, I am happy on my exit interview here, if there's any questions you have about regionalism or about the status of how everyone's playing together or any, I mean, I know these are all real concerns and I'm very candid and an open book and I'm happy to address any of that. I would hate to walk out the door and for you to say, "Well, I just didn't know."
I would like to talk for a minute, Dana, about the duplication services between Ready and Bannock Development.
Sure.
Do you think that's happening?
I think it's happening unnecessarily. I do.
How do we fix that?
I think it's a, it's an issue of leadership. And I think it's an issue of a misunderstanding that this isn't an either-or scenario. You need both. And it would be a shame if Bannock Development went away. But it's also a shame if you have Bannock Development and they're in direct competition and not working with another organization that could only help them, not hurt them.
So you say leadership, is that the board or is it the individuals?
I think it's individuals. And I think I've been very, I think I've been very open to any kind of collaboration and I think that I have bent over backwards to make sure that that happens and I don't think it's been reciprocated. And I, and I've had the conversation and said, you know, we all have territory to protect. We all have territory to protect and everyone has self-interest and your interest should be the city of Pocatello. It should be the city of Pocatello over the region. But at some point, there has to be some altruistic attitude that says, "I do play for the greater good." And that's the only place, and I've been very candid with Mayor Vlad about, the only place that I meet any resistance is in Pocatello. So it's frustrating.
Can you elaborate on that? When you say resistance from in Pocatello, in what regards in terms of...
Just small undermining's, you know, like you go to an organization to extract some data, they say, "We'll get it to you." And then you get a phone call or an email moments later saying, "Oh, we don't, we don't know if we should share that with you, you need to go through Bannock Development." Which I'm fine. If Bannock Development has the data, I will go to Bannock Development. But if Bannock Development doesn't have the data and... But if Bannock Development doesn't have the data, and doesn't have the resources to get the data, then I need help. But I will always go to Bannock first. I want to make that clear. I respect their presence. I will always go there first.
Do you have any recommendations for us as a counsel on what we could do to help with some of those challenges?
Well, I think, I think you are all at a critical point of leadership of your own to say that you either buy into a regional philosophy or you don't. And if you do, then you've got to be all-in behind this effort, or it will fail. You are the piece that, you are the piece of the puzzle that will break down the foundation of what's trying to be done here. You absolutely have that power, so own it and know it. But, and so that's what I, I guess I'd say, is if you're not in, then you need to put all your effort in Bannock Development, and be very clear and honest, and say, "We don't buy into this philosophy. We're not going that direction. We don't see the need for that organization."
I think the buy-in is tied into not being, the perception, I think, to me, at least, seems like sometimes Pocatello's overlooked in the bigger picture. So I think the concept of regional development is fantastic. I think it's wonderful for the growth of the entire region. But how does Pocatello not feel like it's left behind or overlooked?
So I have spent a year in the numbers, right? And I spent a year trying to sell the region. And I will tell you that Bannock County and Pocatello will never be overlooked. You are the second-largest city in the, in the region, and the highest population base. There's no way for you to be overlooked. And, and you pay, and you, and I guess I would also say, is Pocatello, own who you are and get the chip off the shoulder. I'm just going to be totally honest with you, because I say, I meet people from Pocatello all the time that apologize for being from Pocatello. And it drives me insane, because if you spend 10 minutes in Pocatello, you will see what Pocatello has to offer. But I want you to understand, you are going to lose to Bonneville County for a little while, because right now, they have some things in place that they're getting the attention first, partly because of the population growth, partly because of federal dollars that exist there that don't exist here, partly because of some industry like Melaleuca and Anheuser-Busch, but Pocatello has some awesome things, like On Semiconductor, like Idaho State University, like, I mean, we could go on and on, right? I mean, it's going to have its day. And, and you, and it may even, it actually, if you look at your, if you look at your maps and your ability to grow, Pocatello has the ability to grow far larger than Idaho Falls ever has the ability to grow, right? So you're never going to be left behind, and you are an essential key to the region. And, and that's why I say you have the power to make or break. You're sitting in the driver's seat right next, Bannock is sitting right next to Bonneville County in the driver's seat here. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
There's, I see a question.
No. We need to hire you as our economic development.
I know. I'm like, "Can you show one of me?" Well, I just, I hope that you will take a hard look at, like I said, Bannock Development should exist, should always exist, should always be telling your story, but should be working right with Ready, because you have one of the best stories to tell. And I tell it often and always, and I never tell, I mean, I think you saw it at Colliers, I never tell the Eastern Idaho story without a huge piece of that being what Bannock has to offer. Yes?
I just wanted to say thank you, Dana, for all of your efforts over the last, you know, things that you've done and things that you're still doing to help our region.
Thank you.
And I wanted to compliment you on that publication that you mentioned before also.
Oh, thank you.
I thought that was very well done, and I enjoyed that. And thank you for being very candid and open with us as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us. We, for this meeting, we are adjourned from our work session, and we will go...